Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we are getting ready to start with our Student Empowerment Zone Speak Out. So we are looking forward to hearing from some phenomenal young folks as they share with us the different things that they want to share with us from their schools and being representatives of your schools. So at first, we're going to call Forest Park Middle School. And if I say your name wrong, please feel free to correct me when you get to the microphone. Kayden DeJesus Cruz with AP Steven Spencer. The floor is yours, Kayden. One second, they're gonna turn your mic on for you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayden, and I want to tell you a little bit about who I am because my story is the reason why I love Forest Park so much. I'm a sixth grader at Forest Park Middle School. My favorite subject is math. I'm on the soccer team, and I'm 11 years old. I live with my godparents, who are also my foster parents, and my little sister. This past year hasn't been easy because being with my godparents is where I want to be. It's where I feel I belong, but the journey of making my dreams of living with them forever has been long and hard. I want to be in a school where I could get a fresh start, where my voice matters, where I could step away from my old life and into my new one, and where I had people on my side to support me and help me feel like I belong. Forest Park has given me exactly what I'm looking for. I love being a Falcon for many reasons. Walking from class to class makes me feel independent, and each teacher helps me in their own way. I was also enjoying new friends and learning with different kids in each class. Along the way, people like Mr. Morgan, Mr. McKnight, Mr. Vern, and Mrs. Spencer have been there for me. They have all supported me, listened to me, and encouraged me to keep going. Another cool thing is that one of my godmoms was also a Falcon, and I want to follow in her footsteps. I want to make both of my godparents proud by getting into a good high school like Putnam, just like they did. And one day go to college. They always told me it all starts in middle school, and now I can see why Forest Park isn't just a school to me. It is my fresh start, my future, and that's why I love being a Falcon. Go Falcons!
Thank you. Wonderful job, Kayden. We appreciate your passionate speech that you provided to us. I did also want to say on behalf of Mayor Serna, who is the chair of our school committee, that he sends his regards on tonight. He loves to hear the students speak out, but unfortunately, tonight he's just a little under the weather, but we know that we look forward to having him in our next meeting. So just keep him in prayer. Okay, so next, we're gonna move on to the Academy at Kylie. And we are going to hear from Kyla Ingram here with her advisor, Principal Imani Hines-Kunz. Let's give it up for her.
Good evening, school committee. I would like to give thanks to my principal and family for supporting me and giving me this honor to speak in front of you today. It has been a huge change going from elementary school to middle school. I attend the academy at Kylie, and I was nervous, but as the year goes by, I'm getting more comfortable. My favorite part of my day at school is when, is in the morning, which is when I have crew. Crew is something that I enjoy at school because I had the privilege to choose what I was interested in. If you're wondering what crew I picked, it's called self-care. In self-care, we are going to meditate and relax. I would love to tell you what I'm learning in all my classes. In math, we are learning the surface area of a 3D shape. In E-Lay, I'm learning all about geek mythology. And in science, we are learning about mirror and reflection. One thing I like about my school is how we have the options to pick what we are interested in. I'm glad we have the privilege to do that, but in order to do that, we have to follow the habits of scholarship. The habits of scholarship is rules we have to follow to get kickboard points. When we get enough kickboard points, there is a fun event that we do. If you are wondering what the rules are for the habits of scholarship, there are respect, responsibility, perseverance, quality, and integrity. We had to follow those rules to get points for the event. School has been amazing for me. I am looking forward to making a lot of new friends this year. Thank you for taking your time to listen to me. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Kyla. And now, we're going to hear from the Academy at Kylie again, Gia Lys Rolon from Principal Imani Hines-Kunz again. Okay, thank you so much for your support, Gia Lys. Let's give her an applause as well. And next, we have from Kylie Prep, Imari Marshall Woodward, excuse me, Woodard, and being supported by Calvin Hamrick and AP Catherine Machini.
Good afternoon, superintendent, school committee members, teachers, and parents. My name is Imari Marshall, and I am here to share my experience at Kylie Prep. I'm an eighth grader. I entered Kylie Prep at the beginning of seventh grade. I felt like a part of the school community right away. I transitioned quickly into my new environment. I have achieved success at Kylie in many ways, and I have shown immense growth. My reading scores went up since joining Kylie Prep. I am now in the 86 percentile for achievement and growth. I am proud of my scores because I am reading on an 11th and 12th grade level. I currently have a 4.0 grade average. I am a strong writer now, too. When I am excited about a topic, I get in the zone, and I feel like I could write for hours. I enjoy E-Lay classes. My favorite activities are the debates. Kylie Prep helped me become a proficient reader, writer, and speaker. The culture at Kylie Prep feels like a family. I had a strong start this year, and I was able to settle in and get right to work right away. I am excited about my transition into high school. My first choice is Putnam, and I look forward to finding a future career path. Thanks to Kylie Prep, I feel ready for high school, and thanks to Springfield Public Schools, I'm a lifelong gladiator.
Thank you, Imari. I don't know if I heard correctly that Imari say that you have a 4.0 GPA? Absolutely, and applause is worthy. That's what I thought I heard, and I'm like, oh no, we have to stop and bring some recognition to that. Congratulations on your hard work. Keep up the good work. And next, we're gonna have from Legacy Academy, Starr Gabriel, being supported by Principal Anna Lugo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Starr Gabriel. I'm the eighth grade student body president at Springfield Legacy Academy. I'm here to talk about fun activities my school has had so far. But first off, I would like to talk, tell you a little bit about myself. I was elected as student president to represent the school, so I want to share a really special story from last year at the Step Up Seminar. I was given the candle from the eighth grade student president. That moment was very meaningful to me because it was more than just a candle. It represented leadership and trust that the students and teachers had placed in me. I have been in Legacy since sixth grade, but this year has been the best year so far. We have spirit reefer Hispanic Heritage Month. Even though I didn't perform myself, the students across the school had the courage to perform at the talent show as different singers and dancers in front of the whole school. Aside from that, we also have more clubs than ever. We have a boys' and girls' flag football team, a bilingual art and theater club, a fabric art clubs, a mock trick club, and a chess club. Of course, my favorite is the new volleyball team. Our first game is October 12. Middle school is only three years, but you really want to spend all the time you have with your friends, teachers, and everyone else there. Even though it can be hard to come to school, you sit down and realize these few years are precious, and you can't really complain. Without Legacy, I want to have the ability that I do. I went to, if I went to a whole different school, I wouldn't know Spanish. This school really teaches, this school really teaches kids who speak Spanish their whole life English, and Spanish to kids who only speak English. This makes me, this makes them gain more knowledge, even though some kids can't come to school, they learn each day they come. Even like this, even like this, Legacy are really special. Legacy is a place where everyone feels included and heard. Everyone's voices matter. Legacy is not just school, but a family, and every single student here plays an important role in making our school the great place it is.
Thank you so much for your speech. Keep up the good work, Legacy. Next, we have from Chestnut Tag. We have three folks coming to us from Chestnut Tag. The first is Aubrey. I'm gonna ask you to pronounce your last name for me. How do you pronounce your last name?
Berthium.
Berthium, thank you so much. Being supported by Rosa Santiago and Akeem Donaldson.
Hello, school committee. I'm Aubrey. At my old school, I was constantly finding myself bored and unfocused. This was because I knew all the material already, and I was learning above curriculum level. At Chestnut Tag, I feel challenged and engaged in my work. Tag teaches us a grade level higher than what we would normally learn. Not only does this challenge our brains, but it also greatly prepares us for high school. Tag is, Tag is great because it challenges us and keeps us engaged. Not only is the work engaging, but the teachers are, too. They make sure we always feel safe and prepared for our day. Overall, the Chestnut Tag community is very engaging with their students. One example of Tag helping its students achieve great things is the national award we won. We were nationally recognized by the Department of Education. This just shows how hard Tag pushes us to be our greatest selves. The moment you step into Tag, you become a part of our wonderful community. Being a part of the Tag community means trying your hardest and pushing yourself to do great things.
Thank you so much. And next, we have Ava Berthium.
Good evening, school committee members. Hello, my name is Ava, and to me, parent involvement is one of the key building blocks of Chestnut Tag. As a student, it has not only improved my relationship with learning in school, but it has also helped my parents understand my schedule and curriculum. One superb example of this is student-led conferences. These are the key to parent-to-school connections because they allow students to show families their grades and highlights of each class. This connection empowered me to be my best self in class and try hard. Diving deeper into the topic of parental involvement, one event that is inclusive to parents is Open House. Looking back about a year ago to sixth grade, Open House was wonderful. Tag was immensely welcoming to families with a multitude of activities, including a scavenger hunt that counted towards entering a raffle. This made Open House much more than showing parents around because Tag makes events like, events like these memories.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have Maya Kirkpatrick.
Good evening, school committee.
Come up to the mic just a little bit, Maya. Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. Hi, I am Maya. I attend Chestnut Tag. The teachers and staff here are always finding ways to encourage students to do their best in class. When I first joined, I thought the school would be like my old one. If you did well, you just got an A. But at this school, after the first semester, we had an honor roll celebration for all the kids who got honor roll. This positive enticement towards students achieving their goals makes Tag an excellent school for all students. At Tag, you can stay after if you are missing work or need extra support. An example is if you are sick and have a very, a very important assignment that you must make up. You can ask your teacher and notify your parents that you are staying after. While you are staying after, your teachers can help you with the assignments that you are missing. These assignments that are missing could lower your grade, but with the help of your teachers, you can complete the work, and your grade can improve. That is how our teachers help students strive to be the best, best versions of themselves.
Thank you so much, Maya. Thank you so much, Chestnut Tag. We appreciate you all on tonight. And last but not least, it's Chestnut Impact Prep, Elias Lopez Montanaz, being supported by Pedro Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Elias Lopez Montanaz. I was transferred to Impact Middle School for my seventh grade year, and now I'm in the eighth grade. I love Impact Prep because it feels like a community where everyone pushes each other to succeed. The teachers and staff care about us, and they take time to make sure we understand our lessons. I always feel supported when I need help, and that makes me feel more confident in myself as a student. Another reason I love Impact Prep is because of my classmates and the friendships I have made here. We encourage one another not only in academics, but also in sports and other activities. The school makes me feel like I belong, and that motivates me to try my best every day. Impact Prep has prepared me for high school by teaching me the importance of hard work and discipline. The school sets high expectations, which has pushed me to stay focused and manage my time better. The skills I've learned, like organization and study habits, will help me be successful in the next level of my education. Beyond academics, Impact Prep also prepares me for like outside of school. I have learned how to be responsible, respectful, and a good leader in my community. These lessons will continue to guide me in high school and later in life. No matter what challenges I face, at Impact Prep, I learned that I am capable of more than I thought. There were times when the work was challenging, but with effort and support, I was able to accomplish my goals. This taught me that I should never give up, even when things feel difficult. I also learned that I could be a role model for others by helping classmates and showing leadership. I discovered that I enjoyed encouraging people to do their best. This makes me proud and shows me that I have the strength to make positive difference wherever I go. In conclusion, I would like to, I would like to thank my mom for transferring me to Impact Prep and all the teachers, students, and staff that have helped me become the student I am today. Thank you for your time, and good night, everyone.
Thank you so much, Elias. And thank you to all of the speakers on tonight and all of the adults that came out to support them. We appreciate you. And that concludes our Student Speak Out for tonight. If you are welcome to stay for our meeting, which starts promptly at 6:30. Until then, have a wonderful rest of your evening if you choose to leave. Okay, we are getting ready to start our meeting today. We're going to be, um, standing to do our, um, pledge of allegiance. But before we do, I just want to acknowledge that our chair is not here on tonight since his regards. He is under the weather, so we ask that you keep him in good thoughts and prayers at this time. Have a moment of silence. That pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We had a phenomenal, uh, student speak out earlier at six o'clock from some great schools and some great students sharing their stories. And so we are getting ready to call this meeting to order, if we may.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Attorney Murphy. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Gresham. Ms. Hurst. Ms. Bruno Naylor.
Yes, present.
Mayor Sarno, absent.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. I actually did that out of order, but I thank you all for consideration. At this time, we're going to have our approval of our minutes, Mr. Clerk.
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we thank you for the motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mrs. Hurst. If you could do the roll call now.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno, absent.
Thank you, more than sufficient votes. We're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a voting item, which is A, vote to approve Central High School's overnight field trip requests to the M T, MSTCA Bob Glennon Twilight Invitational in East Falmouth, Massachusetts on October 12th, 2025 and returning October 13th, 2025. Uh, we have representing, uh, to have a conversation on this Catherine Hackens and Stacy remotely. We're gonna ask Superintendent Denal if she would like to give us a overview.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Good evening, everyone. As always, it's wonderful to be here. I, I feel as if we, we have a vacancy here. The mayor's always so good about pulling out my chair. I didn't know how to sit down without him, so Mayor Sarno, we miss you. Central High School is always making sure that they provide opportunities for their athletes to continue to develop in athleticism and making sure that they are competing against other students who will stretch them and help them to get better and better as student athletes. This opportunity is on Cape Cod, so it's difficult for them to get back in the same day that they leave, but we know that we have responsible adults who will be chairing this trip and chaperoning this trip. It will be held at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds. I believe that's somewhere near Falmouth on the Cape. And it is indeed an athletic event for both our male and female teams. There are multiple teams that will be participating, and we do have one of the planners, one of the coordinators on Zoom to help further explain or answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Dr. Denal.
So moved, Vice Chairwoman.
If there be no questions or comments, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh...
It's a great event, by the way. I've, they, it, they're actually running right at Twilight. It's, it's, uh, quite the event, it's pretty cool. Been done a couple of times to it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So we do have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Attorney Murphy. Roll call, please, Mr. Court.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno, absent.
Thank you, more than sufficient votes. Thank you Catherine Hackens and Stacy for being available for us. Um, as you see, we are eager to allow our students to participate in this field trip. So at this time, we're gonna move on to our presentations, uh, which is A, district priority for post-secondary success. Dr. Yolanda Johnson, uh, Dr. Denal.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. As you know, we've been fortunate to have presentations on all four of our district priorities. We started out with early literacy, then we transitioned to a presentation on middle school transformation, and then we also enjoyed a presentation on college career readiness, and this fourth presentation is our fourth district priority of post-secondary success. Dr. Yolanda Johnson has been doing this work for quite some time, and it's great that we can have her present on some of the things that she's already accomplished with her team, as well as some of the things that we plan on accomplishing during this school year and beyond. Dr. Yolanda Johnson, please step forward to the podium, as well as the other individuals that may be presenting with you this evening. Thank you in advance.
You're welcome, thank you. We, we're a team, we won't quit our day jobs. Not sing for you, but we have a presentation. And before we start our presentation, I just wanted to share that graduating from high school is a landmark achievement for our students. But Springfield Public Schools does not want this to be their last and only credential. Getting all students to their Hall of Fame requires collaboration, both at central office and at the school level. We want all students to have the appropriate knowledge to follow their desired path. Most importantly, we want to say that Springfield Public Schools has structured systems and plans in place to help them reach their vision of success. So this evening's presentation is truly a collaboration, and the next voice you'll hear is Rosa Valentin.
Thank you.
Director of Multilingual Learners.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Johnson said, my name is Rosa Valentin. I'm the director of the Multilingual Learners Program, and I'm also part of the Post-Secondary Success Team. So this slide that we're seeing here, uh, provides context of our presentation on post-secondary success. This is our community, this is us, this is our students, this is who we are. Um, and as we can see here, the city of Springfield lags in the state, state in the city, um, the city of Springfield lags behind the state in the numbers of residents with high school diplomas or bachelor's degree. In a city where Latinos, where Latinos as the largest demographic or Latinos resident have the lowest degree in the, to attain. If we look at this, we can see that at the bottom of this slide, it shows that our poverty rate is 25%. And as you can see, the more education you have, the less likely you are to be underemployed. There is a direct correlation between educational attainment and annual earnings. Um, I have to say that as a Latino person, this is heavy on my heart. When I look at these numbers and percentage, it really is heavy on my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as a result of analyzing that data, which we were all underwhelmed by, um, at the district and at the school level, we have established post-secondary success teams. Um, as you can see, there's a number of us represented at the district levels post-secondary success team. Um, we've been working together to create systems and structures, um, and a really explicit, um, methodology for schools to implement their post-secondary success teams. And so the school-based teams will be comprised of stakeholders from across the school, representing our multilingual learners, as well as our exceptional learners, and really analyzing data and identifying some of the barriers and challenges we have at making sure our students are college and career ready and working to improve their college and career readiness so that they will be much better prepared to be successful in post-secondary life.
Thank you.
So as just C S O Collins mentioned, the metrics are important to determine where are we now and where are we looking to move the needle? So as you can see here, these are our metrics that are in line with the district and school goals. More importantly, these metrics are also in alignment with the National Research on College and Career Readiness, uh, which magnifies the middle years and the significance of middle school readiness indicators as it relates to then high school readiness, um, and then ultimately post-secondary success. So obviously, it's critical that the school-based team made up of principals, counselors, teachers, and staff work collaboratively together to support the four priority areas.
Thank you.
Right, good evening. Um, this, um, um, slide represents, uh, the number of students who graduated, um, who and what in a, in a college or a university immediately the fall following their graduation. As you can see here, we continue to experience a decline or steep decline from 2015 to 2024. Um, and if you also look at the other side, you'd also see that, um, we are below the, the U S, uh, high poverty rate schools nation, uh, nation, nationwide, and then also, uh, behind Massachusetts. Uh, that said, um, it really alarming, and what we really need to do is to make sure that we continue working with our students to make sure that by the time they graduate, they graduate, uh, high school with a plan, whether it is military, uh, going to college or trade school, or working. Next slide, please. Now, this is, uh, an aggregate, um, it's, uh, uh, some demographic information of the class of 2024 with their college enrollment right after, uh, high school, that the 39% we were talking about earlier. Uh, as you can see here, uh, the takeaway is our female students, um, they are outpacing our male students. Um, and then also, we should also be very concerned with, um, our Latino students and also the, um, the exceptional learners and the M L L students as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. On the left side, we see what our 2024 graduates, graduates indicated they planned to do after they left us. Nearly a third planned to enter the workforce and a little over half planned to attend college. On the right side, we see a similar percentage of 2023 graduates who also intended to enroll in college. However, only 39% of graduates actually enrolled the fall after graduating, and only 28% returned to college for a second year. This, this slide reminds us that it is not enough to get students into college, but we must get them through college with a degree. Thank you.
Good evening. Now we're gonna turn our attention over to college completion rates and identify the top 10 colleges where our, our graduates enrolled. The chart on the left shows how many students from the class of 2017 and 2018 earned a two and a four-year degree within six years of graduating high school. What you see here of the class of 2017 is 10% earned a two-year degree, 12% earned a four-year degree. This rate slightly decreased with the class of 2018, where 8% of students earned a two-year degree and 11% earned a four-year degree. Overall, amongst those two cohorts, about 20% of our graduates, one in four, earned some form of secondary, post-secondary degree after exiting, um, our high schools. The table on the right, that shows, um, the 10 top schools that our class of 2024 enrolled in immediately following graduation. 31% of the class of 2024 enrolled in STCC, followed by Western New England College at 11% and Holyoke Community College at 8%. UMass of Dartmouth rounds of, rounds us off at 1%. These data reveal an opportunity for us to really explore the factors that strengthen post-secondary persistence so that more students not only start their post-secondary, uh, journeys, but also successfully complete the degrees that they pursue. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
It's good to see you this evening. This next slide is data based on follow-up surveys for students that were in the class of 2024 that were in the CTE programs. And it was self-reported from these students. We heard from 73% of our graduates. The chart shows how many respondents we got for the top 10 CTE vocational programs. So if there was, if there were less than 15 graduates in the program, the data was suppressed and it's not shown on that current slide. Next slide, please. Now, this slide shows that most students reported participating in an additional education or employment in a field related to the vocational program. So most, um, students after surveyed ended up in, um, going on to a program where they received additional education. So that's what you see the majority of in the orange. In the final slide, this slide shows the same data as previously shown, just in a different format for review, given the amount of data shown on the previous slide. So we intend to provide professional development and hands-on support so that all stakeholders are equipped to build an internal capacity to deliver comprehensive college and career information and therefore promoting increased secondary success. So we want our secondary success to increase and our students to obtain jobs and careers. This includes pathways into four-year institutions, trades, apprenticeships, military service, and/or entry to the workforce. So this concludes our presentation, thank you. I'll bring Dr. Johnson up for further questions, if you have any.
Thank you so much. So we definitely appreciate your presentation on tonight. First, I always have questions, so I do have a few, but I would like to open the floor up to my colleagues to see if anyone has a question. Oh, my goodness, I forgot to announce our student representative who was sitting over there when, uh, we first opened up the meeting. I had it written down with a big old notice to myself, and I still missed it. So I do want to, please forgive me, uh, for not acknowledging you earlier. Ali Delong. Thank you so much for being here with us, and we know that we are going to hear a report from you shortly, so you will get an opportunity to share a little bit more about yourself and your school and all that good stuff. Thank you. And to my colleagues, does anyone have any questions about the presentation? And you also can ask questions if you have them, Ali.
I do, but I, I'm happy to wait.
You can go ahead, Mrs. Hurst.
Okay, great. So I do have a question. Thank you so much, all of you, for, for all of the work that you all do. If we can go to the slide that was, um, titled Post-Secondary Enrollment, the Fall Enrollment Rates. So for the class, for the, for 2024, are we saying that only 590 of the graduates from 2024 enrolled? And is that out of a total number of students that graduated throughout the district?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so only 590 students enrolled. And is this enrolled in a two-year or a four-year or both?
Great question. Um, we do have that broken down. We did not include that in this presentation, but we can be sure to follow up with you because we have that information. So we can get that to, um, Mr. Vargas, and he can share that with your permission.
I believe the question is, does the 590 represent both?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, it represents both.
We have it broken down. Does, it's, we do have it where it's disaggregated by two-year and four-year.
Is it lower for four-year or is it higher?
I wanna say it's slightly, it's, it's slightly higher.
For four-year and less in the two-year?
Yes.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that, I...
No, that's okay. And, and then I think my other question was, um... So if we look at the plans and outcomes of S P S graduate, the plans for the 2024 graduates, there's 426 students who are, or it looks like, is this just planned? Like, they didn't actually matriculate? Because I'm just looking at the numbers for the four-year and the two-year, and those would seem to be more than the 590. And so I guess I'm just wondering if this is what they stated their plans were, and then what actualized was the 590?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then my last question, if I may, Ms....
Uh, Mrs. Hurst.
And when we looked at the, the, the slide deck... And when we looked at the, the slide deck or the, the slide on the completion rates in colleges attended, why did we go all the way back to two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen?
Because that's how the data is reported back to us from the National Student Clearinghouse. It's six years post-high school graduation. So when we submit our, our data to the clearinghouse between Thanksgiving and December, we would hopefully have been the class of twenty nineteen. So it's six years post-graduation from high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Mrs. Hurst. Does anyone else have a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Putnam information, was that, that was a voluntary survey?
Yes.
Wow, and seventy-three percent did complete. I think that's, that's really very good to have that kind of a completion rate. And it makes the, the information that's way over on the left on the, the next two pages where one percent were unemployed and two percent were not in the labor force. I'm not sure what the difference is between unemployed and not in the labor force, but.
Come on up, Assistant Superintendent Poe. We had the same question. And, you know, I want to just thank Madam Superintendent because she did want to ensure that we included information and data on post-secondary success that included our C T E, our flagship high school. So we are learning this data with you. And that was a question we had and Assistant Superintendent Poe has the answer.
So good evening again. So when we were looking at the data in the presentation, we were, I, we were having some conversations about what the difference between not unemployed and, what was the other term there?
Not in the labor force.
And not in the labor force. So unemployed are people that are currently actively seeking employment and not in the labor force or those that are comfortable not working and they're not seeking employment.
Interesting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Collins? Are you all set? Okay. Sure.
So a follow-up question to Mr. Collins. Seventy-three percent is a great response rate. Did this, when was this administered to them and how?
It's, it's during their senior year, right before graduation and it is self-reported. So it's voluntary. The students receive the information, the ability to complete the survey.
They do it before they leave school?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. You all set with your question, Mrs. Hurst?
I think so.
So I have a couple of questions as well, Dr. Johnson. So I want to go back to the slide that talks about the class of twenty twenty four fall enrollment rates for selected populations. And just ask if we can get an update on this slide with the numbers because the percentages are a little bit confusing. That would be helpful. I, I would assume it's because people, for example, who are multiracial might identify as multiple things. So maybe that's why it looks a little, the percentages don't add up to me.
Are you referring to the?
It's like the fifth, the fourth or fifth slide?
With our special populations?
No, it says, well, it says for selected populations and then it has by race and ethnicity?
Yes.
Yes.
We can request that information be added.
Okay.
Received a breakdown of our post-secondary enrollment fall after graduation, but that is not what you're requesting.
No, no, thank you. Yeah, I just want to, want clarification because like, for example, for Asian, it says sixty-nine percent, but then it's African-American, forty-six percent and it just right there goes over a hundred percent. So I'm just a little confused at the numbers of it not totaling a hundred percent to me. That's me processing, trying to understand what, what it's saying. So if we can just see the hard numbers, then I think it'd be easier. For me anyways, I don't know if anyone else on the, on the committee feels the same way, but I know for me, it will help me to better understand what these numbers are saying.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, Mr. Collins.
So the percentage in the chart that says African-American, black, it's forty-six percent of all African-American, black students who enrolled, not the total population, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so each category, that's the percentage.
Of the population.
I'm not happy with the thirty-nine, but I'm, I wish more of our kids were going in. That's, that's.
It's graduates. It's of the graduates.
Right.
That enrolled.
So it would, I, I think just the fact that we're all unpacking it on this end to try to ascertain what it means, it would be really helpful to just see the numbers, hard numbers as well. And so that's just one of my questions and I appreciate that. It's good information. On the completion rates in the colleges attended, I wanted to know if we, and I don't anticipate that we have this, but I'm kind of throwing it out there to see if it sticks. I know that we talk every year at graduation about the number of students who get all of the scholarship money. And when I see these numbers, it's telling me that there's a lot of money that's being, that our students are not utilizing. And I wonder if there is a way for us to understand what that really looks like as far as what students are being offered versus what, what they're actually utilizing because of this enrollment being a lot lower than what we. So they'll say at the end of the school year, we're going to college and then something happens within those two months that they don't make it there. And it would be really good to know a little more about why they're not there. And I know it's not always a negative thing, like a lot of our kids are trending on this entrepreneurial thing and they're doing hair and nails and all the other things and they're making good money doing it. So they're like, I don't want to go to college right now. Maybe, maybe not ever, but just not now. And I think it would be interesting to know if those are some of the factors that are affecting the students enrolling just as much as maybe some of the negative things around affordability or what have you. But when I think about the fact that there's all this money that is not getting utilized, I'm like, well, affordability is not always the problem.
You're correct. And a part of our summer melt work is to really bridge that gap by providing support to students graduating seniors to ensure that their plans to go to college can actually be a reality. And we continue to do that work. We are actually going to be revisiting our summer melt work, trying to figure out how to close that gap.
Right.
We, it's, according to the data, as you pointed out, it's declining and we notice that there is a gap between what students' plans are and what actually happens.
Thank you. And I, and I would want to say to Assistant Superintendent Escobano, I know that you work with the youth council and a lot of the conversations that they have are often sometimes things that they think they want to talk about. But I would love for this to be something that they are asked to chew on to share with us, like why they are making these decisions or how they see in college versus how we saw it or the value that they see it versus what we think it is, because everybody knows that that's a conversation that's happening right now across the world. People are talking about whether or not college is the thing to do. And when you see so many entrepreneurs making millions of dollars who never made it through college, it's just like, people are wondering, what should we do, right? So I would love to hear like feedback from the young people too. Because they, we can look at the number and unpack it all day, right? But they're the ones that are going to say to us, like, this is what I know. This is what my friends are doing. This is why they're doing it. This is why we make those decisions. And I, I, I love to be taught by young people sometimes and have them school me on things. They do it a lot to me in the different programs that I'm affiliated with. So I wanted to just throw that out there as well. And then I think I'm almost done. On the survey of twenty twenty four Putnam graduates, we talk about the percentage of students. What, what I wanted to ask in this question is, when we look at the percentage of students who are going to college overall and then we look at the percentage of students from Putnam that have gone to college, what is that percentage of the overall number?
Disaggregated by school?
Yes, so if we look at just those students from Putnam versus all the other students that are not in the C T E program, based on what I see here, it's a large number of students that are going to college out of Putnam, which is a great thing. I'm not, I don't, I all have a problem with it, but I think it helps us to tell the story of what, again, going back to that question I asked a few minutes ago, like, why are students making the choices that they're making, right? If they're getting this training where they could literally walk into the workforce and make thirty dollars or fifty dollars an hour, why are they then still choosing to go to college? Versus other students who don't have the C T E skills or credentials and they may or may not go to college either, like what's happening?
Well, one of the pieces is understanding that there is a difference between C T E and vocational education. When you look at the pathway, let's just stick with C T E. The pathway for C T E is a post-secondary credential, whether it's a certificate or an associate's degree. You will see that pathway. Then you have vocational education and that typically is the pathway where you go right into the workplace based on your, your area that you studied in high school. So there is a difference between the two. We do have the data that we will provide that disaggregates this by high school. You know, the post-secondary enrollment, immediate fall following. You will notice in that data when it's shared with you that some schools are high, but when you begin to look at completion rates and persistence, it declines.
Right.
So we definitely will provide you with that information. We, we have it readily available that we can share.
Thank you.
Blame it on our ten-slide limit.
No, that's not, I appreciate it. I do. I appreciate it that you all want to give us as concise a version as possible and then allow us to ask the questions on probe. So I do appreciate that. And, and then I also know that sometimes you, you can't anticipate all the questions we may ask. So if you try to answer everything before we ask, then we may be sitting here for forty minutes and it might not be necessary.
If I had brought my laptop in, I would have had it for you, but I left Lola in the car.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. I do. And thank you for answering the questions. I think that, you know, Mr. Gonzalez, you're the chair of the vocational and it would be really nice to know as we continue to unpack these, these statistics, you know, which of these programs even in Putnam are the ones that are drawing more people to go to college? Because I, I always understood that people learn differently and in the vocational and C T Es, they're, everything's hands-on. So sometimes it's just a matter of kids learning the way they learn and now they're able to go to the next level because they've been able to grasp the information versus other traditional schools that don't have those opportunities. So as we always rethink and reimagine what education looks like. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you so much, Vice Chairwoman Naylor. I'm actually gonna ask that you recognize Ms. Gresham. I believe she had a question before me. Ms. Gresham, I don't know.
Oh, I was going that way now. Did you have a question first or?
Oh, yeah, but I didn't know if she had, was trying to get.
Oh, yeah, we, we want to let the student rep ask a question as well, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll go then.
Okay.
Very well. Well, I just want to look at the, the data here, the post-secondary enrollment, fall enrollment rates and this thirty-nine percent number. And I just want to go back to, I believe it was a discussion that this body had several months ago as it relates to F A S F A. And Dr. Johnson, you were so kind as well as Dr. Denal to bring in this wonderful woman. I forget her name. She came from Chicago. What was her name?
Dr. Joyce B. Brown.
Yeah, she was absolutely wonderful. And I think really, you know, the, the data, I believe we can continue to parse through this data. We can continue to disaggregate it and contextualize it over and over. I'm very action-oriented, as many of my colleagues are as well. And I, I go back to this idea that I think one of the fundamental steps that this school committee can take, and I believe it was Dr. Joyce Brown, right? I think one of the things that she had suggested or exhorted us to look at was making F A S F A a requirement. And we kind of went through the wave of that, even for students that are going into the workforce after vocational education. It is the core competency of being able to sit down and complete that form, a core competency that even in today's workforce, as someone who reviews resumes at the organization I'm at, that a lot of people lack. So I think there's a lot of value there regardless if people are moving on to the military, they're moving on into, directly into the workforce and ideally to drive this number of thirty-nine percent into a post-secondary pathway, again, for this body to make F A S F A a requirement. So I don't know what your sentiments are on this. I, I just, I feel like we're coming back to the same thing again and I want to get to a, a resolution. So I appreciate the data and I don't know, Dr. Denal, you have any sentiments on that or Dr. Johnson?
Madam Superintendent, we met today and we were revisiting and thinking about our plans moving forward and that will be coming to subcommittee soon.
Thank you so.
We heard you and we are responding.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez, and we have a question from our student rep, Ali.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to follow up about the survey that you guys did. I think it's a great idea to get information. I was wondering if that's something you guys are going to continue to do or that you were looking forward to do for other classes?
The survey, you mean the survey from the data from Putnam where our students were able to indicate their plans?
Yeah.
We do have that information and that is slide number. Where it says students' plans. Who had that slide? It was slide number.
Dr. Johnson, I believe she was asking if we plan on doing it for future graduating classes?
Well, that's my point. We do, we do.
Plan on doing it.
But students have their plans and we do it at the C T E schools, but our students at all schools share their plans. So you have their plans and then what actually happens. So we do that. We do provide students with that opportunity. And that's self-reported, including the data, the survey responses from Putnam, it's self-reported. At our other high schools, it's self-reported. And then we see the results of that in our post-secondary success data.
And we'll continue to do it in other classes as well.
Yes. It's every year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do.
Thank you. Sorry, someone is in there for you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to complicate it. It's, we just want better outcomes. We want to close the gap on what kids actually say they're going to do and what actually happens. And more importantly, as Assistant Superintendent Poe shared, it's self-reported. So we have to begin to find out what are the obstacles or barriers from students saying what they want to do and what they actually do, you know? And we can go back to the slide that Rosa Allen Queen shared. We have to look at our local context as well. So if folks are, if it's entrepreneurship, that's great. We just are not seeing it in our local context with our poverty rate and our, and money earning potential. We want to see that shift. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ali. That was a wonderful question, Mrs. Gresham. Did you have?
If I may just add clarification, so National Student Clearinghouse provides concrete data for the college-enrolled students. The self-report data from Putnam is harder to substantiate only because we are not able to track them into the workforce and what have you. So we are trying to figure out some way if we can follow up with them a few months later or a year later. That's part of our post-secondary vision is to see what happens to them a year later, just as National Student Clearinghouse allows us to do. So we're trying to figure out what tool we can use to collect that data to see if one year beyond high school graduation, if what they planned to do became the reality.
Thank you, Dr. Denal. Does that answer your question? Okay, good. Mrs. Gresham, did you have a question as well?
Okay.
It's a wonderful team and we thank you so much for all that you do. You did a very good presentation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hurst, you have another question?
Sorry, Dr. Johnson and team. So I, I actually, I have some, some thoughts here after hearing all of the questions and thinking more about, about the presentation. And you said it just now. You said we have to figure out how to close the gap between what students are reporting versus what their actual plans are or what becomes realized. And so as I'm thinking about the post-secondary metrics, I'm thinking about the MYCAP. And I'm wondering, like, what does the MYCAP? Is that where you all are extracting the data for their quote-unquote plans?
Yes.
Okay. And so I do think that Vice Chair Naylor raises a really good point about like the student voice and outside of it just being documented. Because the reality is, is that sometimes students are writing what they think folks, the adults, want to see on paper. And so I do think there is value in actually hearing from students, a random sample as to what is it exactly? Like what is their most candid thoughts about their plans? Because it's, it's not necessarily adding up. And so I, I do think that there, we got to sort of dissect that and really sort of drill down without, you know, in a real judgment-free zone because it might not be what students are wanting and thinking that they would like to do, but they think that that's what we want to hear. And so I think that that's, that's a real truth. The other thing that I want to be mindful about is the F A S F A completion. I thought, I saw your video, Dr. Denal. I thought you did a great job. During my, my daytime job, we, we do scholarships and we require students to complete the F A S F A. and we require students to complete the FAFSA. And we know that last year, there was a debacle with the FAFSA. And so many students couldn't get an opportunity to go to school because they couldn't even complete it. And so now that's not the case this year. But I want to caution us about, so yes, I think the FAFSA needs to be done. Um, it's not an easy thing to do or to complete, as we know. The other thing is, is that whether, whether students complete it or not, if they matriculate, students oftentimes find themselves in a real financial pinch by the time they get to sophomore year of cla, of school. Because they've been overpackaged by the institution for their freshman year. And comes sophomore year, they're, they don't have any money. And they can't move, they can't go any further. And so, yes, I think we can think about the front door, but we gotta think about the, the, the end, right? Because these students are matriculating and then getting saddled with debt. We saw that HSI has been cut, right? The funding to HSI, to HBCUs. I, I, I actually will be really honest and tell you that I am super surprised that Western New England is as high as it is considering what their tuition is in comparison to our state institutions. And so there's, I, I mean, I would love to know and figure out what that is. But I just think we have to be thinking about like, what is the most, what education can we provide our students so that they can persist and complete? And they're not, and we're helping them to mitigate financial barriers all along the way? And not just so they can matriculate for their freshman year and maybe their sophomore year, and then they don't ever finish. Um, and, and last, but, but certainly not least, I think when Dr. Vice Chair Naylor was talking about the statistics, I think it would be really helpful to be able to see these numbers juxtaposed to our numbers. Like, meaning, and I'm perhaps not saying that correctly. If our current enrollment of black students is 18%, and our current enrollment of Latino students is 70%, like, what is the fair comparison? Like, when I'm looking at these numbers, and I think Mr. Collins stated it, is it 34% of our current population? Is it of the Latino students that are enrolling? Like, what are, what is the actual percentage? Because these numbers can be really confusing. Um, and I don't know that they necessarily speak to who from our population is accurately, accurately being reported on.
When we, um, prepare the backup slides for the information requested, if it's absent from some of the other data that we have, we'll make sure it's added. And again, it will be reviewed by, um, Madam Superintendent so it can be shared with you, with the numbers. And that, that matches the percentage. So you can see it disaggregated in that way.
Thank you. Is that all?
I just, clarification, I took what you shared as feedback for us to further consider and think about in our work. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I actually do have one more and then I promise.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hurst.
For, just as a refresher for us and for the viewing public, can you talk a little bit about the summer melt? Because I, I don't know, I, I think that my understanding might be different. But I'm thinking about what is the actual bridge that gets students from June 10th, when they walk across Symphony Hall stage, to walking into the doors of an institution? And so I don't know that, I was aware that we had something that did that. Okay, so tell me and tell the viewing public, because I'm super interested.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst.
I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Boulah, who leads our summer melt, um, work, and she can share with you with that entails.
Mr. Attorney Murphy?
I'm done. I promise I'm done.
In, in a sort of macro sense, um, so the MCAS is sort of gone now, right? It's no longer a graduation requirement. Do you think that is gonna impact our kids, you know, as they move towards college or decide on whether to go to college or not? And, and, and if, depending on your answer, should we be focusing more on the SATs? Would that be helpful?
So your first question is do, because MCAS is no longer a qua, requirement, will that impact our students going to college?
Well, I mean, the, the MCAS was created to make kids college-ready, career-ready. So now it's, it's no longer a requirement.
Right, we are.
Does that impact these numbers potentially in the future?
I don't believe so.
In your assessment?
Because our curriculum and instruction is aligned with the standards in the MCAS. So students are still receiving access to the standards that would prepare them for MCAS. And they are still taking the MCAS as well.
Right, right. But it's no longer a requirement. I'm just wondering if there's like a pivot from MCAS to other tests that might be better for our kids to go forward into college? Like outside of Massachusetts, right? Because there's a whole country out there. You know, MCAS is really Massachusetts-centered.
Yes.
So would it be helpful if we pivoted more to the SATs?
In our district, our students take the PSATs and grades 10 and 11, and they take the SATs in the spring of their junior year.
Right.
And we've been doing.
I mean, I know they take them, but, you know, they aren't really taught to take the SATs as they were with MCAS, at least it seems to me. Karen, you know, it's sort of like.
I know in Connecticut.
You focused on the MCAS and then, oh, by the way, you gotta take the SATs too.
What I will say is in Connecticut, when they moved away from their CMTs, I believe it's called, they moved to using the SATs. Am I correct? That will be a decision that we will hear from the K-12 Graduation Council in their report in December. So I really can't speak to it. But what we have done in Springfield Public Schools to ensure that we're leveling the playing field, to ensure that our students are having access to the same kind of, um, college exams that students in surrounding districts are exposed to.
And also, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, in sort of your opinion or your team's opinion, that, that, when you look at the gender population and the difference between female and male, it's a, it's an enormous difference, 17%. So, and particularly, I'm assuming with our Latino, uh, young people. So why, why is that? Why are the, why are men, males, not going to college at the same rate as, as females? Why do you think that is?
That's historic, what we found. Um, we had some presenters from Texas and they have found the same, um, trend in their data. If you look at, um, some of the larger historical black colleges and universities, the females outnumber the males. However, I would say that, um, when Assistant Superintendent Escobano convenes those students, it would be really interesting to find out, um, as we're hearing student voice, what are young people, our males, are saying about attending college? But that is a national trend in that area. And we just wanna continue to unpack the data to address it specifically.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. I, I did wanna go back to the, I heard, answer the question that Mrs. Hurst asked. And then, Mr. Collins. Was, if you have?
No, I was, I was saying, I'm not gonna answer my question until the last one's had a chance to be answered.
Thank you.
Okay, we usually start our summer melt program uh, right after students deposited, uh, enrollment, their enrollment deposit. Um, so starting May 1, we start by giving them a checklist of everything that they have to complete to get ready for fall. Uh, starting with, um, paying their enrollment deposit, um, checking their, uh, new student checklist, uh, for each schools that, um, or the, the school they decided to go to, uh, so that they can complete everything in there. The checklist would usually include, uh, new student orientation. Make sure that you register for that. Uh, you register for classes. Uh, you attend orientation. You pay your bill. You view your bill to see if you have any questions. Um, and then, uh, pay your, um, complete your housing applications if you're using, if you're, um, living on campus. Uh, paying your whatever deposit you have in there, uh, and things like that. Buying books, we give them information about ways to buy books as cheap as possible into, even renting books and th, and things like that. Uh, so we put all of that in a checklist and give that to them. And then we also have counselors at each school available to work with any students, uh, that may come or over the phone or in person. And the same thing for our financial aid advisors. They are all, they all work in the summer. And we are there working with students just to make sure that if they have any questions about their bills, uh, any questions about the financial section of things, that, um, they can, we can help them to take care of it. For example, if they have, all of them, they have to do promissory notes if they're doing, uh, if they're taking a loan. So we sit down with them, help them to complete that form, sign everything and get it done. The issue that, uh, with summer melt for us is we're competing with summer work. So most of the students, they're usually working. So if we don't catch them before May, then, uh, they don't, they, they try, they sometime not come back to us. We email, we, we, we call the students as well. We used to look, uh, to use a system called Signavine where we would, um, text the students, that information, every steps, so they had, they can complete it. Uh, we did not, we knew our Signavine this year, but we're looking for other ways that we can still communicate with students via text, but in a cheaper way. Um, so these are the, the activities that we do in the summer just to make sure that, uh, students are enrolled at their respective colleges. We use our, um, social media platform as well, um, to do that way.
Thank you so much. And if I could just ask Dr. Denal if we could, I, I'm assuming it's on the website, but I know for me, I've always assumed summer melt to be for middle schools and high school and elementary. I never thought about it being post-high school graduation. So I would assume, most parents probably assume the same thing. And, uh, so if we could have information on it sent to the school committee members. And also, I know there's a lot of partnering organizations that partner with the district that are probably assuming as well, uh, just because we're so used to the context being around middle school and high school. Uh, that would be a great way for us to support you all and what you all are doing. And if there's anything else you think of, please let us know. Because I think if, if more people in the community understand that there's this resource, parents are in the, in the business of wanting their kids to succeed. And so if there's a resource that they can access to help their kids be successful and it doesn't require us yelling at them every single day to remind them, we will absolutely take advantage of it. So, uh, thank you so much for sharing that. And thank you, Mrs. Hurst, for asking that question. And Mr. Collins, I know you had another question as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The pages aren't numbered, but the one, one that has the NSC, um, post-secondary enrollment obviously is the one we have the longest period of time of information on. And it may help us as, and all the hard work that went into this is very appreciated because this helps us try to understand everything that we're doing. And without this kind of reports, we can't. Um, something I think that could make this chart helpful for all of us would be two things, if, if we can, number one, bracket off COVID years. Because as you can see, there's great fluctuations in these bar charts. And the other thing that would interest me, and I'm sure the rest of the committee, and I know there's databases that do the average college cost per year. I'm not sure if there's, I, I know most colleges say, yeah, this is our, our cost, but here's what the students actually, the net cost, for lack of a better term. If we could get figures like that, the average cost during those years and the average net student cost, I think it's gonna help us to understand some of this information and help us look for patterns too.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Noted.
Well, we thank you so much for just taking all the questions that we were firing out at you. Um, we appreciate you and your team. This is a very, like Mr. Collins said, it's very informative and complex information at the same time. And we all know this is a complex issue. So in no way does any of the questions warrant that you are, are not doing a phenomenal job in your effort every, each and every day. So I do want to commend you all on that. But also appreciate your, uh, willingness to receive our feedback and our questions so that we all can continue to do this together. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe that is all for questions and comments. So we appreciate you and your team. Uh, and we'll give you another applause for hanging in here with us.
One thing I wanted to publicly share is that when we shared our increase in FAFSA completion, we acknowledged the schools that did really well. What we didn't do is publicly acknowledge the school that made the most gains. And that was the High School of Science and Technology.
Awesome.
Acting Principal Porter worked very hard with Bruce Williams and Dr. Dr. FAFSA, recall her, um, to really, um, make a, a dent in the number of FAFSA's and students heading to college at the High School of Science and Technology. So I just wanted to publicly share that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to the numbers because I know that it's definitely going to positively impact the numbers that we're looking at. So thank you again. Uh, the next item on the agenda is an informational discussion item for a policy around the Pledge of Allegiance in the classroom. Attorney Murphy brought this up in a prior meeting. And we have Attorney Jeremy St. Laurent and Assistant, oh, excuse me, not Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Denal.
Thank you so much, um, Madam Vice Chair. We wanted to make sure that we were very diligent in following up on Attorney Murphy's question concerning a policy with the Pledge of Allegiance. I did ask Attorney St. Laurent to look in on it as soon as possible. And of course, he did. And he also collaborated with Attorney Ian Keith to research some policies because Springfield Public Schools does not currently have a policy concerning the pledge. So the research did, um, provide three policies from three different districts, and I believe it's three. But they did provide additional information that is in your folder, just outlining what some other districts are doing concerning the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm gonna ask them both to come to the podium at this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr. Denal. So just to, uh, first start with the question that was, uh, given to us during the last meeting. As Dr. Denal stated, there is not currently a policy, uh, addressing the Pledge of Allegiance or the display of a flag in the Springfield Public Schools School Committee Policy Manual. Um, however, there is both a statute and some guidance, um, contained in the packet that was provided to you today. Um, the statute as written, um, historically has been interpreted not on its face, but in conjunction with, um, the West Virginia case from the early 1940s from the United States Supreme Court, which has held that, um, requiring students to recite the pledge is compelled speech and therefore in violation of their First Amendment rights. Um, the same holds true for, uh, requiring staff to come, to, uh, recite the pledge while on work, uh, because it is technically government-compelled speech. It would violate their First Amendment rights. Um, that being said, statute is still on the books because of its interpretation by the courts, allowing it to continue to stand. Um, the statute is interpreted to fall in steps with the, uh, requirement to the First Amendment and not compel speech, but allow, uh, schools to put a policy on the book that allows students the opportunity to recite the pledge should they choose or, uh, should their parents, um, in, in conjunction with whatever policy is on the book for that particular school, allow the student to recite the pledge.
Thank you.
There is a policy, uh, that's in your packet. Uh, it's titled Section K. Uh, and for that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ian, because he's actually the one who was able to pull this out and find it for us.
Thank you. Good evening. So this, this policy is just a sample that we were able to dig up. Um, it's for Brookline Public Schools. Basically just allows that, um, you know, it sets forth what we're gonna do with the flag. We're gonna display it inside the building. They have, they follow the, uh, the statute 79, uh, chapter 71, six, uh, chap, chapter 71, section 69, um, is the, is the statute that Attorney St. Laurent discussed. But this is, again, it's, it's, the policy is just, it's a, it's a voluntary, um, oppo, gives the opportunity. So if someone wants to come up and recite the pledge in the beginning of the day, the superintendent or the judge me allows that person to come up and, and allows anybody else to participate. Um, there is no, as, as Attorney St. Laurent, uh, stated, there's no, you can't compel anyone to, to participate in the, in the pledge. You can't, uh, pressure anyone to participate or not participate. It's basically, it's a complete voluntary basis. And so this would be something that I, I would recommend And so this would be something that I, I would recommend that if we want to adopt such a policy, we discussed at the Legislative and Contract Subcommittee. Uh, it's just an example. There's not, and I did look on the M, the MASC website as well. They don't have a sample policy. Curious why they don't have, I think they had one a long time ago. They don't have one now. So this would be something that I would recommend we discuss with the Subcommittee and put something together if that's the will of the body.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you, Attorney Keith and Attorney St. Laurent. Attorney Murphy, I know that you brought this up as concern.
I do have a couple of comments and, and questions. So thi- this came to me in, in, uh, you know, of course, all of my children went through the Springfield Public Schools and it seemed to be a little bit scattershot as to whether or not you had to say the Pledge of Allegiance or not, right? And I, I think when many of us grew up, we had to say the Pledge of Allegiance. We say it at meetings, city council meetings, et cetera. And I was wondering what the policy was because some parents brought it up to me saying, my kids don't say the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a policy on it? So I think, thank you guys for, for researching this and bringing this up. So if I'm correct in reviewing what you've sent, uh, from the ACLU and Brookline, right? That was the, Brookline is the policy you sent.
That's the sample, yeah.
Right? And then the other decision is from the ACLU. And then there's a state law, cited Mass General Law seventy-one sixty-nine. And that law requires, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it requires us to allow the students to, the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Of course, there are, you cannot compel anyone to say and make them or coerce them, or that's the sort of language that's in the Brookline policy. But it is incumbent on the school committee, I believe, reading this statute, even though it's an old statute, that we are required to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Is, is that a fair representation of what the statute says?
Well, you have to read the statute in conjunction with the court cases. And so, and how that, and how the courts interpret the statute.
Well, as long, as long as you're not compelling, I mean, it, it, so for example, when I was young, there
One, one second, Attorney Murphy. Attorney Keith, can you come a little closer to the microphone so that we can hear you? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Attorney Murphy.
Thank you, thank you. You know, when I was younger, there were folks in my class that were Jehovah's Witnesses and they would not say the Pledge of Allegiance. So they sat down and they did not say the Pledge of Allegiance and they were not compelled or, or they were not required to say it. So that would be in compliance, I, I think, with the Brookline policy and the ACLU decision and state law. Isn't that correct? Like is, that we have to give the students an opportunity to say it? We can't make them say it. They have a right to not say it. But we have to at least give them an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance every morning, according to this statute. Now, I know in the enforcement, it says that the teacher can be fined five bucks a day, right? For not allowing the Pledge of Allegiance to be said. So there actually is an enforcement mechanism. I can't imagine that anyone ever utilized it. But it is on the books and it is law in Massachusetts. Isn't that fair to say?
Yes, but it's in conflict with the, the Supreme Court decisions and the, uh, Supreme Judicial Court decisions. So technically it's on the books, but it's not, it's not enforceable law. That is how I would.
Well, so would you say that the Brookline policy that you gave us is in compliance with both state law and the Constitution of the United States?
Yes.
Okay, so there we go. And that requires people to say the pledge, an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gives them the opportunity, right? Correct.
Thank you, Attorney.
And if I could just
Oh, go ahead.
Other thing, and I'm sorry, uh, are there any other districts other than Brookline that, that you could find that have a policy around this?
I haven't, I've not done a deep, deep dive. I, like I said, I, I searched the MASC website and other schools that list their policies on that website. I could not find one. Um, Brookline was just a Google search. I could dig a little deeper, but I, I would say that they're not prevalent. I haven't seen a lot of districts with Pledge of Allegiance policies.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Keith. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, you have a question?
You, one of the statements you just made, I found very interesting. MASC used to have a sample policy?
I, I couldn't find it in, in the reference. So in the blue binder that we have for the, for the Springfield Public Schools Policy Manual, there's, in the back of that binder, there's an index. It's a very old index and it references an IMA policy. Uh, and where it says the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't, I couldn't find that anywhere. But if it's on the back of that thing, that, that made me believe that there once was a policy that the MASC did have regarding the Pledge of Allegiance. It's just not available on the website currently.
That's kind of weird that that would have disappeared, but, um,
Well, they do update their policies, you know, periodically. And then maybe they just withdrew it based on the decisions that came out.
They do, but we don't know that for sure or when it dropped. I'm just curious as to when they would have dropped such a policy. Because policies are made, we, we can make them as broad as we want to, obviously. I would be interested to see, like Attorney Murphy, if there are other, we could get other samples of policies. Cause I think there's going to be a desire on the committee's part to look at developing a policy in Subcommittee. Obviously that's a deeper conversation than typically we go to in a meeting like this. Where you just, you know, however it works out. But I think we'd like to have some other examples too, so that we can take a look at others. Because there's probably going to be an appetite to look at something and since we don't have something, to create something that would give people guidance and, you know, that would be also legal. So. Anything else you can find to help to send, send to Subcommittee would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. And, uh, we definitely will take that up in Subcommittee and dig a little bit deeper. So anything that is requested that anyone might think of even after this meeting, uh, let us know. We'll make sure that it is something that Attorney Keith has and Attorney St. Laurent to, uh, make sure that we are on it with that. Dr. Denal, did you want to say anything to that?
I believe Attorney Keith and Attorney St. Laurent covered it adequately.
Thank you so much. And do we have anyone on this side?
I, I would just, I would just recommend that we reach out to Glenn Kutcher, who's the Executive Director of the MASC and at least inquire as to what happened to the policy, as to why it's not there, which would, could further influence or
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Our soon-to-be president of the MASC, Mass Association of School Committees. So we're excited about you and that honor that you're getting ready to walk into finally, deserving. Uh, did you have a question, Ali? Okay. All right. Well, I got, oh, Ms. Attorney Murphy.
Yes. So you, uh, you go to Putnam?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do you guys say the Pledge of Allegiance in the morning?
So, um, I, funny question, actually. I do the announcements in the morning and they do make me say the Pledge of Allegiance. But being in the classroom, most of the students don't actually say it.
Well, they, they don't have to say it, right? It's the opportunity to say it is, is, is what we're talking about.
I went to Springfield Renaissance for middle school and there they didn't say it at all in the morning announcements. So I'm not sure.
So it's like a hodgepodge. There is no policy really, right? It, it, if you agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I have, no one has told me that I have to say it or I don't have to say it. So.
So, I mean, if I could just, if the law that the Massachusetts general law says that in the opening exercises of each school day, each teacher at the commencement of the first class of each day in all grades in all public schools shall lead the class in a group recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. That's what the state law says, right? And we don't have a policy that says anything differently. So aren't, aren't we in violation? Technically, I know that nobody's going to run in here and prosecute anybody, but aren't we in violation of, of the state law when the kids are not given the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
So, uh, the line you just
On like a daily basis?
I'm sorry, I missed that last line.
Well, like every day, there's, there's people that don't, we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance. So
That's correct.
Aren't we in violation of this law every day?
The line you just read compels the teacher to have to recite it. So leading the class in the Pledge of Allegiance would violate the First Amendment rights of that staff member. So by the Supreme Court's ruling, that line would be considered invalid and unconstitutional. But the students have the opportunity. It doesn't say that they necessarily have to be led. They have the opportunity.
Well, the teacher doesn't have to say it. They just have to give them an opportunity to say it. We're not saying that, that, that's not, I, I mean, there's nothing in the Supreme Court decision that overturns this statute, right?
If, if I
Not the statute, that was in front of the court. So directly, no. But the, the verbiage of the Supreme Court ruling would hold that rec, forcing, uh, a staff member or a student to recite it at a particular
Well, nobody's forcing that. That's, see, that's where we're
Excuse me, um, Attorney Murphy, if I may, just because I know we're going to bring this back into, uh, Subcommittee and be able to hash out all of this stuff in Subcommittee with, with the, uh, we are, I said I would. I'm the chair of the Subcommittee that will look at it, Legislative and Contracts. We will absolutely, and then we will make sure that you are invited to that meeting so that you can participate if you're not in the Subcommittee.
All right. Well, it's on the agenda and I, I
It is on the agenda. We made sure.
About it. Are you telling me I can't ask questions?
I'm saying that we're going in circles because they're saying as much as they can say without doing any additional research.
What I'm thinking about is putting it off to say, uh, we're going to have a Subcommittee meeting in the future at some point to discuss a policy that may or may not be enacted. And right now, it seems to me that we're in violation of the state law and the kids should have an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And that's what the law says. That is completely illegal and in, in my opinion, i- in compliance with the, the Brook, the
And if I may, we
ACLU decision and the policies that we've been provided.
Right. And these two gentlemen have just started with us as attorneys most recently. So we have the burden as a school committee members to make sure that these policies are implemented and that we are in compliance. So you did bring it up.
The state law.
You did bring it up.
State law.
All I'm saying is
That's what I'm
Attorney Murphy, that these gentlemen are not responsible for the fact that we don't have a policy on this right now. So we are going to bring this
I'm just saying it.
Okay. I, I want you to respect as if I was the mayor running this, you would not be yelling at me. So please do not use that tone with me. Now, we're going to relinquish you at this time. And we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. I will make sure at the next Legislative and Contracts Subcommittee, which is next week, I believe. Um, Mr. Vargas can let us know what day it is next week. I think it's Monday or Tuesday. We will have the Legislative and Contracts Subcommittee and we will be able to revisit this issue at that time. So thank you so much for this and thank you for bringing that up to us, uh, Attorney Murphy. And we will move on to the reports of the Standing Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, uh, A, student and parent concerns, Mrs. Gresham?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So we did have a meeting last Friday. Did have a meeting last Friday, um, an informational discussion. And the protocol on partnership opportunity for parents. So we have parent advisory council. We have the parent volunteer process. We have many partnerships to engage our parents. Even in, um, even when there's a concern or complaint, we have the, um, Family and Community Engagement Department. And in addition to that, we have an online resolution system for our parents to file a complaint if they need to. So we have many, uh, partnerships, uh, within our district to ensure our parents that they feel that they are heard.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Gresham. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to B, Building and Maintenance Committee, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, per the, the last meeting, we're going to be reviewing, uh, the item for the renaming, um, over at the Chestnut, uh, campus. For the weekend that it passed away. We're going to be reviewing this. Uh, I will note to the body, um, unless there's any major push on this. I think based on the last meeting, I'm going to be asking the attorneys and also, uh, Chief Cavon by way of the Superintendent to go back to the policy. Uh, they're supposed to be in place for the naming of, um, you know, school, uh, property. Because for the past, uh, I want to say two or three namings that we've done, we've, we've went ahead and done them. And, uh, the last one, uh, came along with some hesitancy. And when I did inquire and asked the question, I believe it was one of my colleagues who brought it up that there was in fact a policy that was supposed to be followed. Uh, so with that being said, I, I think it's important to bring that policy forward. We can have the meeting. But I think that it requires a survey at the, a school level and perhaps some other things before we do these things. So again, the, the other namings that we did was done in ignorance, not it, done intentionally in ignorance of, 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 of a policy. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, moving on to C, Legislative and Contracts Committee. That is myself. We do not have a report, but we do have a meeting that will be scheduled for next week and everyone will receive a notification of that meeting. Uh, D?
No report at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. And E, Budget and Finance Committee, myself. Again, we will be having a joint meeting next week and we will make sure that everyone is invited to that meeting. Uh, next, F Vocational Education Committee, Mr. Gonzalez.
No report at this time.
Thank you. G Technology Committee, Mr. Collins.
No report at this time.
Thank you. H School Safety Committee, Mrs. Gresham?
Yes, um, Chair. We had a meeting last Friday, informational discussion. And, uh, it was regarding student safety and security on the bus to and from school. So we had a very thorough overview as to how Springfield Public Schools select, train and support both bus monitors and crossing guards. So each candidate undergo, um, a core background check. They do a reference check. And they must meet district and state compliance requirements before their place. There's ongoing training and professional development for each candidate. So we had a very good informational discussion.
Thank you so much. I know today's National Crossing Guard Day. So thank you to all of our crossing guards. Thank you for, the district for keeping us informed of all these special days. So we can say thank you to them and each and everyone that does great work for our students. And, uh, Mrs. Gresham, thank you so much for that report. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're going to move on to I, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, uh, Ms. Hurst.
No, no report at this time.
Thank you so much. So next, the person we've all been waiting for, our report of the student representative.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm so honored to be here right now. My name is Ali Delone. I'm currently a junior at Putnam Voc Tech High School. Um, there's a couple of things I wanted to talk to you guys about to introduce myself because I will be working with you guys for some time. Uh, my shop at Putnam is Early Education and Care. So I am a future educator. Uh, my shop has a very good balance between bookwork and lectures and hands-on learning in preschool classrooms. For the past two years, my freshman and sophomore year, we did internships in Pottinger. So we collected some hours there. And now our junior and senior year, we're scattered across preschools in Springfield, um, Bolin, Balliet, Mitten Bradley and Rebecca Johnson is where my shop is scattered now. I'm in Balliet, so I'm a teacher's aide there in a preschool classroom there. Uh, my shop is so, so amazing. And any middle schoolers who are interested in and being an educator in the future, Putnam is the way to go because I have learned so, so much in my shop. Um, I'm also proud to say I'm the class president for Putnam's Class of twenty twenty-seven. Um, I got, I ran in November of twenty twenty-four, campaigned for a whole month and then got it in December twenty twenty-four.
Congratulations.
Um, so I've been class president for less than a year, but in that year, me and my council have done a bunch. Currently, our current fundraiser is a big one for us. We're doing Krispy Kreme. Krispy Kreme has the potential to be so good for every school that does it. So very focused on that right now. Um, being class president, I was given a lot of responsibilities. I plan and organize every fundraiser. I'm representing and advocating for my class in every meeting, every student council meeting. I'm the one running it. I make the slideshow. I decide what we talk about, um, et cetera. Big honor, big responsibility. Um, this Monday, we had an assembly for Class of twenty twenty-seven to make sure my class is aware of the fundraisers that we're doing. We want to make sure communication is very clear between the eleventh grade team and the student body. Want to keep them updated and in touch. We gave them ways to keep in contact with us, how to submit any ideas, questions, comments, questions or concerns, anything like that. It was a success, thank God. Um, I'm also very active in sports across Putnam. So I'm the boys' basketball team's head manager. I'm a big basketball fan. Um, so last season was a great season for Putnam, the boys' team. So we made it to the state and Western Mass playoffs. And even though we didn't win any, even though we didn't win, the drive and determination of those boys was so inspirational. And I'm so excited for this upcoming season, real soon, real soon. Um, I'm, I also play softball for Putnam in the fall, in the spring, I mean, excuse me. Um, if you know anything about baseball or softball, I play shortstop and second base. Um, my team put a lot of work off-season. So we're hoping for a better season this spring. Last season wasn't too good, but you gotta stay positive.
Yes.
Um, all that All that being said, I'm so grateful and I'm so excited to be working with you guys in the future. Um, I know a lot of middle schoolers here from the speak outs said they were interested in Putnam and I know they're all so capable of making it. Putnam is really great. And I'm so excited to be here and work with you guys.
Thank you. Have any question?
Not a question, a comment. I wanna, I wanna thank you for doing a shout out. To ask, to tell students if they're thinking about becoming teachers and in your area and your program. It's something this committee has bounced around over the years and there's nothing like homegrown people. To have and thank you for being a student and bringing that forward. Uh, cause it's something that all of us want to see happen for all levels of education. So thank you for bringing that up, especially from a student perspective.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Well, definitely just so happy to have you here with us. Again, as I said earlier, Mayor Sarno couldn't be here tonight, but I know. He is eager to meet you and be able to formally welcome you to the school committee and just continue to do what you do. You're doing great work. You're a great role model already and continue to do what you do. We will talk after because I have a lot of family that go to Putnam. So we could chat. I'm sure you know a lot of them as well and, um, so it's just nice. Everyone that comes here, especially from Putnam, because you know, I got that little bit of bias, but. All of our students are great and, uh, just you being here and every student that has represented. Uh, in your seat has done a phenomenal job, so I won't say you have big shoes to fill because you have your own. But I will say that, uh, we are looking forward to your voice, your input and your questions and challenge us whenever it's necessary. Because you are coming with a unique voice and perspective and we wanna hear what you have to say.
So much.
You're welcome. Okay, so next is the report of the superintendent, Dr. Denal.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to just give you a brief update on. Things that are exciting and things that are happening in the district, but before I do that, I just really wanted to, um. Applaud our HR department for supporting the. Early education program and pathway at Putnam. We can just put our hands together for. In the past, students who were in that pathway would actually go outside of the district for their internship and their training. Then, uh, Chief Williams and her team had the vision of bringing them inside to our schools. So I definitely echo what Mr. Collins said about there's nothing like being a homegrown. Nothing like being homegrown. And the sky's the limit with a Springfield Public Schools education. So we're grateful that you are here and that you are going to be hired in a few short years. Yes, you are.
Yes.
So it's great to have you on board. I also wanted to just remind Springfield of the greatness in this district. I am part of the Connecticut Valley Superintendent Roundtable and we meet every other Friday. To discuss, you know, the urgent topics and for them to also share with us critical information pertaining to our role as superintendents. And we were all going around the room introducing ourselves. And it became my opportunity, other districts were saying glowing things about their districts and things of that nature. And I introduced myself and I did not say that I was the superintendent of the best school district, as I often say. The reason I didn't is because I administered a test right there on the spot. And I said to everyone in that room, if you have ever worked in Springfield Public Schools, and now this is a room full of superintendents and leaders. I said, if you've ever worked in Springfield Public Schools, I would like you to stand. Almost ninety percent of the room stood up. That speaks volumes to what we do here in Springfield Public. And we really do need to pat ourselves on the back and we need to applaud ourselves. Because every other Thursday we gather here. We hear our students. We hear, you know, decisions that need to be made and it's not in vain. I wanna encourage us to continue to dig in and do the hard work. Continue to challenge ourselves to reach higher and go further. Because what we are doing matters not only to students and families, but to our staff members as well. So Springfield, we should be proud. Springfield Public Schools School Committee, thank you for your continued support. Thank you for digging in and having those challenging conversations and thank you for never giving up on us. We appreciate you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. As a product of this school district, I can proudly say the sky is the limit if you have a Springfield Public Schools education. Now I'll get to my real notes. I, I, I did not plan on saying. I wanted just to remind us that we continue to have our superintendent observations. They are going very well. We have decided to dig in and go narrow and deep and get back to basics on grade level instruction. As well as checking for understanding. There's a great deal of research that is out there pertaining to what needs to happen in the classroom. In order for our students to be ready to be world changers and contributing members of their communities. We're digging in on grade level and checking for understanding. And as members of the school committee, as you join me on some of those observations. You'll be able to see firsthand the outstanding work that's being done in our classrooms for our students and you'll also see opportunities for growth. And so I'm excited to showcase our best and brightest teachers, our best and brightest students. And I welcome everyone to really dig into the information around grade level instruction and checking for understanding. We wanna make sure that our students are prepared. Grade level. You mentioned the MCAS attorney, um, Murphy and there is an impact. When we teach to the standard, our students are ready. When we teach to the assessment, our students fall behind. So thank you for bringing it up that we do need assessments. Perhaps we do need to pivot to SAT or ACT or something, but we do need to assess our students' ability to. Be proficient on the standards and that's what part of our observations are, exactly what you mentioned, checking for understanding. We also are launching our college and career readiness Fridays. We are looking forward to seeing our college gear every Friday and this purple envelope. Is gonna support our vision of supporting our scholarship dollars. You mentioned, um, Councilwoman Hurst, yeah, Committee Woman, I was sorry. Madam President, Hurst. We are definitely looking at the dollars and how the dollars run out and don't last a senior year or degree completion. We wanna make sure that the Springfield Promise Scholarship is funded beyond all of us. As long as we have students, we need the Springfield Promise Scholarship. So those of us at Central Office and we'll try to reach beyond Central Office. But as for now, we'll have these purple envelopes, fill it up with our donation in order to wear our college T-shirts. From now until the end of the school year, every single Friday. And so we wanna make sure that we do our part and I'm looking forward to passing out purple envelopes to everyone on the committee. Okay. So we wanna continue to fund that and go ahead.
So for us, it's gonna have to be Thursdays.
Oh, yes, yes. Thursday, yeah, I like that. Absolutely, absolutely. College gear Thursdays. There you go. I'll have to buy a lot more T-shirts because I have to do Thursdays and Fridays, but we'll, we'll figure it out. But we will definitely be passing out these envelopes to everyone. And last but not least, our post-secondary presentation. Thank you all so much for presenting. We really appreciate each one of you. As you can see, I have a very, very strong team of believers, a strong team of believers. And because of their belief in our students, they put together a presentation that shared with you the urgency and the opportunities. The urgency and the opportunities lie before us. And I know June of twenty twenty six, we will have different data. Our data will definitely show that we have an increase in fast for completion. We'll have an increase in post-secondary enrollment. We'll have an increase in all of the things that will ensure that our students are college and career ready. And that they will be garnering post-secondary success based on the supports that we provide for them. The impact of post-secondary education cannot be understated. All of us in this room live above the poverty level. And that's because we all hold advanced degrees beyond high school. Let's let that reality sink in. And we wanna make sure that all of our students have the same opportunities. So whether it's college or career, the data is glaring. We have to help our students access opportunities along both pathways. Even our career-bound students require additional. Education and credentials beyond high school. Be it an apprenticeship or an industry-recognized credential. And the academic skills are the same for both pathways. And that's what we're here to ensure, that our students are successful, be it college or career. And with that said, thank you so much for your time and attention. Have a wonderful evening. I turn it back over to Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Denal. Do we have any questions or comments on the report?
A comment?
Yes, Mr. Collins.
Often at this table, many of us have said that we would match our staff against any staff anywhere. And the proof of the pudding is when you go to a meeting like that and you look where our staff. Our staff, we, our staff is so dedicated and trained. They're successful no matter where they go.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Could I, I, I.
Attorney Murphy?
Something too, please. So thank you very much, Dr. Collins. I couldn't have said it any better and you said it much more eloquently than I could have. And I, I just wanna say also how grateful I am that my children all went to the Springfield Public Schools, graduated from Central. Went to college and got out of college, thank God, and got jobs. And, and it did in four years and, you know, my youngest son is at Putnam and so he's, you know, in the, uh, in the sort of vocational technical. Piece and, and you're absolutely right. They do need more education, vocational kids after they get out. And I just, I am incredibly grateful, as Mr. Collins said, for the, the teachers and the administrators and the, you know, the custodians and all the people. The whole school culture in Springfield and I listen to people sometimes in the suburbs. You know, Long Meadow and East Long Meadow and Hampden and Wilbraham and other towns and they say, oh, I would never have my kid. You know, go to the Springfield Public Schools and they have no idea how great our schools are. And how passionate our teachers are and how, how great they are and, and, and what they do for the young people of Springfield. So I'm just incredibly grateful, like the superintendent and, and particularly you guys, you know, getting our kids to that next level. So appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. Do we have any additional comments or questions?
I just wanted to also say that after ninety percent of the room stood up. I did tell them that it was proof positive that I am the superintendent of the best school district.
Thank you. Um, I remember at the convocation sharing a story about, uh, Mr. Singleton. And being able to reference a lot of the people that went to Central and graduated and. We, many of us have made decisions to stay local and do the work that we do. Mrs. Hurst is an example as well. We both, uh, went to Central together. And you're absolutely right when you talk about, you know, the quality of the folks that we have in our community. That either matriculated through the school system or are part of our school system to make sure that our kids are educated. And I think that, you know, there's always gonna be bad apples and unfortunately. People, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil and people pay attention to those instead of the folks who are doing the hard work, who are not looking for recognition. Who are not waving their hands saying, look, look at me what I did. They're just doing the work because it's necessary and they love our kids and they love our district. And they love education and I think that is a testament. So I thank you, Dr. Denal. I thank all of you that are even here tonight on this beautiful evening, as Mr. Collins reminded me that the Yankees and the Red Sox are about to play. So I better hurry up and be quiet. Yes, so all the things, all the things, but, uh, but I do appreciate each and every one of us that, um, believe in our district. And continue to fight for the kids and our families and our educators because we can't do it alone. It takes all of us working together. So thank you, Dr. Denal, for such an inspiring, uh, report tonight and, uh, we're gonna move on to unfinished business at this time. Hearing none, uh, we're gonna move on to new business. Hearing none, we are looking for a motion to adjourn. Bye, everyone. And we need a second. Thank you, Mrs. Hurst, and a roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Ronald Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno, absent.
Thank you. Thank you for the meeting tonight. Have a good evening, Springfield.